We're going live, but it takes a second for it to...
Just tell me when.
We're live.
Everybody, please stand for a minute. First of all, I apologize for being late. We had some technical difficulties and we'll make sure everybody saw everything that was going on. We're going to start out with an invitation by Councilman Almejo and a pledge allegiance by Councilman Wright.
Let's start our heads. There we are. We look forward to this coming year. We have a lot of events planned this year and a lot of activities within our city. We ask you to continue your blessings not only on our mayor council and staff, but also the citizens of Centerville. We thank them for all the things that they've done with us and for us last year and the things they'll do with us this year. In your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please have seats. Again, I apologize for being late. You have technical difficulties and all been correct. Welcome everybody and everybody on line two. We want to make sure that people on line with us have some exciting things tonight. All right. First off here is public comments. There are no public comments listed. There's no old business. New business outside. It's a sign of love just every year that happens. MDA presentation to the Centerville Fire Department. Bridget Monroe, welcome Bridget. Councilman Almejo and Chief Jones, please.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, ma'am. I'm going to turn the floor over to Bridget with the Muscat Association.
While we're working on our technical difficulties, thank you for having me today. I'm glad to be here, new year, with you guys. I was back in November. I attended city council and this community presented and the fire department presented MDA with a check from their field of boot efforts from 2023. And I did not have this award with me, which gives me an excuse to come back to see y'all the first of the year. But every, every year in the fall, there is a conference. The Georgia Fire Chiefs Association has a joint conference. And MDA presents awards to departments across the state that have done outstanding fundraising initiatives for the organization. And it's done by categories of population to make it a level playing field, right? It's not fair to compare Centerville to City of Atlanta, for example. Obviously, very different size populations and all that stuff. So I just wanted to share, I like to give an update. So the department began filling the boot for MDA in 2006. So last year was 17 years of this partnership. And this community has raised together with these guys and going out filling the boot throughout the year and their annual golf tournament collectively over $160,000 for MDA during that partnership. And we're just so proud of this community. And when we break things up into the population sizes, so for across the state, for every single fire department that has from one person living in that community to 9,999. Centerville, once again, for the 2022 year, because there's always a year behind, was the largest supporter raising $16,500 for MDA. And I have a really nice plaque for them to take back to their midfire station that is gorgeous. If you haven't had a chance to see it, you should go make a visit. Well, I know you guys have, but there's probably people that have not seen it. And but this will be proudly displayed in the fire department, but would not be possible without y'all's approval and the community's support and the businesses' support that sponsor and play in and donate to the golf tournament and the boot drive. So thank y'all so much. Before I have them come up and give this to them, I do have a technical, technical difficulties workout where I can share. You know, I talk about the progress, right? Progress that is being made because of the fundraising that's done across the country and you know what that means to local families. And I think that, I think I tried to show this in November, but we didn't have a V. So I'm happy that we got it worked out where I can share this, this short little video clip. So I hope that you guys will enjoy.
So with SMA, it's like your whole body, because your whole body is basically muscles. So it's all your muscles are weak from head to toe.
What'd you say that tape was for?
Making me strong.
Oh, or else do you wear tape?
Both of both. We were meeting nobody who really knew SMA. They were just doctors that were very smart, but not in SMA. We were given no hope, no nothing. But I was reading an article about SMA specialists in Orlando.
The visit was more at first, you got to know what MDA was.
That day is when we realized like, oh, we are a part of the MDA and you know, we belong somewhere. Type one, type two, even type three, it's the life expectancy is low. MDA, among other groups, helped fund the testing, the clinical trials for this medicine. Whereas before, you know, we didn't even know if he'd have the strength to push his own wheelchair. And I think because of this medicine, he can't push his own wheelchair. Without it, there's no way he could have.
Yeah, to write and color and do those at school, but you know, far to the medicine department, they're able to do.
It's like, okay, maybe we, we'll get our baby for longer, you know? Maybe there's not that constant just badness hovering over us because it's going to be helping his body to get stronger and not weaker. So I think that is the big overall, like, wow, we can have dreams. We can plan for the future.
It's a huge encouragement to have the community, you know, people and organizations like MDA to help us.
The people who donate, they are making such a huge difference. And if they could see the difference they've made in Parker's life and in our lives, that you're absolutely raising their lives and completely changing. So what we thought was our force is no longer our force. Thank Parker, be here.
So I appreciate the opportunity to share that with you guys because I feel like I can talk all day long about what progress is. And you know, there's 22 drugs the FDA has approved. But when you see the stories from our families and the impact that it makes, that's because of you guys. So thank you for continuing to support these, this wonderful fire department y'all have and for the community for their support as well. So I'd like to present this if you guys will come up. So we can take a photo and you know, I want y'all to come down and get the photo too. You know that. I like pictures.
Okay, everybody here on three. One, two, three. Okay, nobody move. Okay, all right, here again on three. One, two, three. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
This is you again. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Y'all run out of wall stickers.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
We're going to have a brief executive session, so let me take a motion to remove the executive session for the meeting.
Second.
All right, motion is second. All favors are aye.
Aye.
All folks same side? Prove. No one on the session. All right, item number two, he is a proposed 2024 calendar of events, City of Centerville, Centerville. Councilman Bird and Director of Economic Development, Brian.
Hello. Hello. Hello, okay. I believe in your folders, you should all have a copy of the proposed calendar of events for 2024. If anyone has any questions, I will field those now. Anything in bold is a new addition, except for the movie nights at the park. Those are not completely new. We had done those in the past, but we've not done them for a few years. And we are bringing them back. So that's why they are also listed in bold on the calendar.
Since we've got time.
Sure.
Would you mind just giving us a rundown of each fold item?
Sure. So just to reference for events that we'll be bringing back, this Food Truck Friday, we did move that up in the calendar. We found last year that once school started, that event really just kind of plummeted with people being back at school and their schedules changing. So we moved it up more into early spring to start that instead of waiting till closer to summer. And then it will go through August. Once the splash pad closes, it just kind of dwindles off. So we did adjust that. Some of these things are not necessarily events that will be held in the park, but there'll be things that are happening here at City Hall or around town. On April 13th, you'll see the public service light up for the military child. That's a fancy name for touch a truck. Touch a truck is a registered trademark, so we cannot use that. But the idea there is that we would have fire trucks, police vehicles, maybe an ambulance, a tank from the base, things of that nature that we would have in the park that kids could come out and get into, hear the sirens, see the lights, all that good stuff. And then we would also have various other vendors available throughout the day for that. So a face painter would be on site. We'd have some music. We have a lady that makes balloon animals. They were very popular at the Fall Festival. So her, again, if we can get the Bubbles Over Middle Georgia Lady to come out, she has a very limited schedule. We'd like to have her as well. And some of these are still working ideas. So the final project, the final event may look a little bit different than what we're describing. But the idea is that this is what will happen with them. Then moving on to May, the splash pad will open Labor Day weekend, like it always does. And we intend to have a food truck Friday, but we're going to theme it out with Splash Bash since that will be the first weekend and everybody is always ready to get into the splash pad. We'll have live music for that. The 12th through the 18th, we will do Light the Park and also City Hall Blue. That is a police appreciation week, I believe. So we'll have some blue lighting that will be focused on the City Hall building as well as in the park. On the 13th, there will be a prayer and breakfast with the police department. And Tess is working with Lieutenant Sales on some of these details to make sure that we can get our officers here and get them what they need. Another new event that we added is a Shaved Ice Saturday. So there are about 50 shaved ice vendors in the middle Georgia area. If you're not aware, if you need one, I've got a long list. And we are just very limited in our opportunities for them to participate in events. So we decided that what we would do is offer an opportunity on a Saturday where a vendor could let us know that they're interested. We would assign them a week. We do it once a month. And they would be able to come out to the park on a Saturday, when it's really busy, when it's hot, the splash pads going, and just set up for the day. And they can sell shaved ice all day long and they can make money and then they can pack up and go home. We won't have any other vendors. We won't have any other food trucks. It'll just be the one approved vendor. Per month. So it would rotate through. It would not be the same person every month. But that would allow more opportunities outside of just the Food Truck Friday events to be able to have more of those vendors present. Because we are just very limited in our space with our food truck events. We can get about 10 trucks in safely. And you don't want two or three of those to be all shaved ice every time you have an event because it's not worth the time or the effort for the vendors that come out if they have that kind of competition against themselves. And it takes away from the other opportunities that we could have for other vendors at that time. So this will allow for more opportunity for those vendors to be in the park on, you know, a hot spring or summer day when they're going to make good money being out there. You'll see that repeat throughout the spring and end of the summer with the Shaved Ice Saturdays. Independence Day is, as it has been in the past, we are looking at a different option instead of fireworks for this year. I don't want to talk too much about that because we kind of want it to be a surprise. But we do know that last year with the logistics of having to move the launch site for the fireworks, having to shut down City Hall and shut down the police department and shut down the court, and it was, it was just a lot. And so we're looking at possibly doing a different style of show that would not allow for, or wouldn't, wouldn't require all of that to happen and would be unlike anything that really happens in middle Georgia or south Georgia for that. I don't know anywhere outside of Atlanta that does what we're looking at doing. In July, we've added a Christmas in July event. That will be here in the community room. And it will be set up like a mini Fall Festival of sorts. So we would have various vendors who would come out for that. We would have it indoors since it will be very hot. We'll have, you know, the air conditioner running. We want to have a vacation Santa. He'll probably have on flip flops and a Hawaiian shirt. But he'll be there for photo opportunities with kids. We'll have food trucks set up in the parking lot. And then just various vendors who would go through an application process.
A lot of guys with beards and flip flops getting their feelings hurt when the kids come up with them. They're saying that.
Possibly, possibly. Or maybe they'll play along. That'll be fun too.
That guy at the park.
That'll be fun too. So we'll see how that goes. But, but we wanted to kind of mix up our, our vendor events because if you've noticed, we have removed the market from the calendar. That had kind of just turned into a mini craft fair every couple of weeks. And so we decided that we were going to try to take that aspect of the vendors that would come out for that and give them other opportunities throughout the year that might have a better outcome as far as foot traffic and sales and that sort of thing for them. In August, we will do the National Night Out with Centerville Police, which again, Tess will be working with Lieutenant Sales to organize that. I think in some places it's called Take Back the Night. Is that the same event? It's not the same event. But it's, it's just a national event where you may have like a block party or you might do a parade or you may do some public event that brings the public out just to show safety in numbers and that sort of thing. And like I said, Tess will be working with Lieutenant Sales to finalize that. Then in September, as we do every year, the splash pad will close Labor Day weekend. That will be the end of the season for that. And so the following week, I believe the splash pad will close on a Monday and then on that Saturday, Saturday, the 7th. We, last year, we had a foam party. We did it before the splash pad kicked off. There's a new company in town that does that called Miss Daisy's. They're a lot of fun and kids love it. It's just bubbles, bubbles and foam everywhere. And so once we've closed the splash pad for the season, we would like to bring them back because we don't want that getting in the splash pad and, and you know, washing the city because that's what would happen. But once we've closed the splash pad for the season, we would like to have them come back and just kind of do a wrap up party for the year in the park there. So we would again have music. We have various vendors. And we would have Miss Daisy's foam party there in the park. And then we want to bring back movie nights starting in the fall. So we would have two of those, one in September and one in October, probably themed. So we may do a Halloween movie in October, a fall movie in September. There is one other of those listed in December, assuming that the weather agrees. If it's anything like last December was, we shouldn't have a problem. But we would want to do one final one in December as well. Our Fall Festival is on the calendar again. That's our, probably our most popular outside of Independence Day that we do. We had over 12,000 people attend that last year and we hope to just continue growing that. We do want to have some interactive activities for that. We tried this last year and it just did not work with the scheduling of the people we were trying to book. But we would like to add some hands-on, in the moment activities. So we're looking at a glass blower that has a mobile unit that they take. So they would be doing presentations throughout the day of how that artisan craft works and how they do that. And then they would also have items for sale on site that they've made. And there are some other vendors that do things like that. There's a wood carver and some things like that that we would also like to add in if we can get them on our calendar. In November, we will again do the Veterans Day City Hall exhibit. We've extended that. It was so popular this last year when we did it for the first time that we want to extend that. Do the America's White Table presentation again, the Wall of Honor. We would like to possibly incorporate the schools into that as well and maybe some sort of contests, whether it be a writing contest or a picture contest or something like that that we would also display in the hallway here at City Hall. And then in December, obviously, we would do the parade. We do that every year. This year, we do want to incorporate a theme. We get that question a lot from people who are participating. What is the theme of the parade, that sort of thing? So this year, we do want to incorporate a theme that will also incorporate a judging aspect and we'll be giving awards based on the theme of the parade. We'll have a judging panel and they will judge each of the individual entries. And then we'll have an award segment for that, probably after the parade. We may do it prior to the parade, but at some point on that day. And in addition to the parade itself, this is what Tess is most excited about. We want to do what's called Snow Much Fun in the Park. It's a pre-parade event. We'll have possibly some food trucks, face painting, different vendors. And we're going to have a couple of reindeer on site. So we'll have a photo opportunity with some live reindeer that the kids can come out and touch and maybe feed and that sort of thing. And then that would be prior to the parade itself. So all of that would happen in the same day. And then we would close out the year with that last movie night, so if the weather permitting. And that's it. That's, that's what we've got. And of course, there are, you know, everything is subject to change based on weather or based on a variety of factors. But this is the calendar that we would present to you and that we hope to have approved and we hope to be able to carry out for the year. We have received the full calendar from the church and we don't have any conflicting dates or times. We do have, we've taken into account there are all changes that they do as well as some other events that they do throughout the year. And so our calendar has been created based around those dates that they have provided to us.
And our agreement with them says that we will do that.
Right. And I will say they got it to us earlier than they had to because they have it to the end of this month to get it to us. And they, they do their best to get it to us as early in the month as they can so that we can move forward with our calendar.
And I would, I would emphasize, you know, if they change something or add something, let us know.
Yes.
Well, I mean, now that they've given us theirs and we're kind of setting ours, I would think that is unlikely. It would be a conversation anyway. We'll see.
Are there any questions? I know there's a lot of new that I put out there, so.
There's a lot, which is good though.
Right. And we want to offer more variety. We want to offer more options. We really want to utilize the community room, which is why we're doing that one event inside. But we also realize that the community room is already half booked for the year. And we're the third week of the month of the first month of the year. So it is a hot commodity and we don't want to take the space away from the public having access to use it. So we're trying to make the best and most of what we do have and utilize that space so that we're not taking anything away from the citizens, but also we're giving them new, new and fun opportunities throughout the year. And also not limiting it to just like six months of the year. Like we want to have events that are happening throughout the entire year and not just, well, we did the spring and the fall and now we won't do anything again until the next spring. We want to really spread them out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if I understand it correctly, there's no, there's no farmer's markets at all?
Correct. Those turned into mini craft fairs every week. It was nearly impossible to get anyone to show up that sold actual produce. So we couldn't really call it a farmer's market.
Well, a farmer's market in a community here, right? There's, there's people that come and sell all kinds of things, not just, not just eggs and steak and chicken. They sell jewelry. They sell, you know, it gives an opportunity for a local community to be able to.
Were they particularly well attended this year?
No.
Well, they weren't. They weren't well attended because the vendors weren't there.
Well, I mean, we had upwards of 25 vendors at many, many of them.
The reason the vendors don't come is because it's not well attended.
Right.
They're not going to make money. They're not going to come.
And if the same vendors are here twice a month selling the same wares.
I mean, my two cents worth is I just really feel that the farmer's market is an attraction to our city that brings people to the park, that brings our community out on the weekends to walk the park and enjoy the splash pad and do all the same.
I understand that, but based, based on, based on what? Do you feel that it's an attraction when she, when she's telling us that most people don't come to it?
Well, that's because there's not very many vendors they came to.
Because most people, because the vendors don't come to it because people don't come to it.
So whatever the argument is, I'm just saying that, you know, I have spoken to the vendors and they, there was a lot of confusion as to whether or not they are having one or not having one, all those kinds of things. And I just think it's an effort that is, it's kind of sad for us to just kick off and put it on shelf when, when it's something that the community itself appreciates. And I, I know a lot of older people that like walking around out there, even if it's got five vendors out there, just enjoying getting out on the weekend to enjoy our activities that we presented. And so I just really hate to see it go. To be honest with you, you know, I mean, I, I think we should reconsider that.
I will say that there should have been no question as to when a market was because the dates were set at the beginning of last year. And every market date set happened. So there was never a time that we canceled a market. They were rain or shine. They were whether we had five vendors or we had 30 show up.
You know, the point is, is that, you know, I, I have spent time talking to a lot of vendors, those that have tried to come out here and those that did come out here. And so I just think that, I just think it's, it's not good that we don't have that. That's all I'm saying. And we could reconsider that down the road. I know this is just a proposal and I'm fine with the proposal, but I think that the farmer's market is something that brings our communities out. And there's a lot of people here now that enjoy coming out and enjoying the park and doing so. And we just think it's, it's a shame we don't, we don't try to take advantage of that to bring our. It's not about selling stuff. It's not about what, what they sell. It's about bringing our community out and enjoying the park on a good Saturday morning.
Shannon, were they, were they the lowest attended events of the year?
They were. And I would make an argument that for any vendor setting up, it is about selling stuff. I mean, they're giving up five, six hours of their day to come out and not sell anything. And that's not easy. They come out, they do their entire setup on their own. They break down everything on their own. They are their salesperson. I mean, it's not just.
So just to me, there wasn't no advertisement. You know, it wasn't very well.
Based, based on what, what other advertising would you like to see? Because it's on, it's on Facebook. It's on the City Hall website. It's on a page. It's out in the park. It's on the voting form.
I'm saying is I wish that we would consider, if we adopt this proposal, that we consider bringing a farmer's market there.
Shannon, are you looking forward to adoption today of this schedule?
We had hoped.
This is the first time I've seen this.
You can adopt it. It can be amended if we add something.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're headed towards the first event. I think that's the idea.
Yeah.
And I mean, we are at the mercy of someone else's calendar to set our own. So we're already lagging behind every other community around us because we can't present our calendar until we have someone else's to then set ours. So if we're, you know, we haven't promoted anything to vendors at this point because we don't know that dates are secured. You know, dates haven't been approved, so we can't advertise to a vendor when our events are happening because it hasn't been approved. So the idea was that this would be presented for discussion and hopeful approval tonight so that in the morning, we can get all the vendor packets out to vendors for the rest of the year.
I think we should adopt it as it's written. We can certainly come back as Becky says and amend it later if we want to. I'd make that motion.
So I, in, in that spirit, I would make the motion that we adopt this proposed calendar events as written with the obvious exception that we, we can amend it later on.
Motion is second. Can you defer the discussion? Okay. All approved. Say aye.
Aye.
All folks same side? Okay. It's approved as written right now. You're with the substitution that we need to change.
You're with the, uh, the substitution that if we need to change in the future, we can change.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much, Shannon. Now I'll take a moment, privilege here and recognize that becoming a member of our management, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Ew.
Proud.
Proud, yeah. But Chris will be entering our management team one day soon and, uh, we'll welcome you to it. Those can be different.
Yes, we will be. Be great then.
Yeah, let's go. Good to have you with you. I've known Chris for a lot of years and he's one hardworking man. Would you agree, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Yep. All right. Appreciate that. And now we get Congressman Counsel. Post one.
Um, I'm just looking forward to some of these great events. There's a lot of new things, uh, that will be proposed here. And, you know, I, I'm looking forward to hearing more details because it sounds like they have a lot of potential. And any, anything that we can get, get them to the park and, and have that spirit of community. It would be one of the good things. So, um, I'm looking forward to the year. That's all.
Post two.
It's cold. We really cold, wrap your stuff up. Water leaks are bad. Thought I was gonna say. Yeah. I looked Mike in the eye really deep when I said that.
Mike knows, he's shaking his head, just thinking about all the bitches that come, right, Mike?
We don't talk about that.
Don't say it out loud. Don't say it out loud.
Hmm, post three.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bird said a little. Councilman Wright even said less. So I don't have any.
You would try, but all, all you have is.
He's just like, Councilman, be able to say, yeah, he's beachy.
Well, I do have something to say. I'd like to congratulate the Fire Department on, on all the hard work that it, uh, certainly, uh, it shows when we receive these kind of accolades and, and recognition for your department and all that they do. I know that, uh, a couple of weeks ago, the Fire Department had brought in Trip 400, uh, PAC 400 to, uh, give us some training, um, a little bit of what the Fire Department does and a little bit of first aid. And they talked about how to, uh, what to do if you catch on fire. And, uh, all these children were learning a lot of good stuff. Uh, great, great team they got down there. Uh, we appreciate that. And so I think that going forward, you know, we got a lot of work to do this coming year and look forward to working with them.
Last, uh, Saturday afternoon, Mercy University invited recognition of all the Centerville schools, all the schools in our district area. And they had a lot of people out there at the basketball game. And the Fire Department was a great participant out there with us and we appreciate that. Tell you all you guys, I told the ones that I saw there, you know, thank them for coming out so much. But they did a wonderful job representing us. And Mercy even gave us a game ball.
They certainly did a better job than the Bears. It's pretty bad.
The Bear, they, they were good. They just weren't quite good enough. But they, they were good. They're getting better every year, I'm saying. But we do appreciate them, appreciate what they did for us. And we recognize the Centerville schools. We do have some remarkable schools in our district area and they've got all types of, uh, awards over the years. They continue to honor these rewards. And we're very proud of them for doing that. Very proud. And Councilman Wright's right, be careful out tonight. Get your pets in the house or we're going to spend the night out. I got one cat that likes to go out at nighttime. He's not going to go out tonight and he doesn't like it. And I don't think I'm going to like it either, he doesn't like it. But be that way. And, uh, I've, I know out in my warehouse, I've got a heater on it. I get all my horses, rats. You know, so be careful out there, you know? It's bad for you, but it's also bad for the city when you, you leak some things. You know, we don't want to have those leaks. And everybody be safe out there too. We're going to have about five days, I guess, on the road. It'll be very, very bad out in the teens and twenties.
Nineteens.
Yeah, nineteen and I know. So everybody be careful. And, uh, I want to tell you my appreciation for everybody out here all, uh, our partner heads. I can't say enough about all of them. Uh, I don't know what we'd do without them. Something happened to them, I think I'd have to wear a tire too. So don't want to have that happen.
That's right.
That's right. Okay, but everybody have a great evening. Thank you so much for being here with us. Have a good one.